Good morning, everybody. I just wanted to let you know that I will be acting Judge. And I won't even think about it takes the judge's place. But anyway, I'm going to ask you to begin this right up front, so if I mess up, it's her fault, not mine.
It's my story, isn't it?
Yes. Okay, we're going to get started with the prayer. The Sheriff's going to do that this morning, and right after that will do the two pledges. So, withstand.
How would God wish to come to you and thank you, thank you for the wonderful day. Thank you for all the people that are here today. Answer the call to serve. We praise you for that and we praise you for answering that call. But we just ask you to be with us as we make our decisions throughout the day and to really track out each and everything. And ask you to be with all the first responders. We ask you to be with the veterans that are here. And we also ask you to be with our military there over the top for our country. We discuss all these things and everything and then.
We are the agents of the United States of America. In two republics, which stands one nation, one empire, in the middle of liberty and justice for all. Honorable, the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, understand, and God, one running into this.
First order of business, we recognize the minutes. Recognize the minutes for a long history of time on the UTE. Correctance. So, recognize. And item number two, vouchers to consider enact upon the approval of Hannah's voucher process for county attorney's office in period of August 8th through August 22nd. The amounts are. The total checks numbered from 1-8, 1-7, 4-7 through 1-8, 1-9-5, 2, wire number 1-1-8 through 1-1-2-3, any amount of $978,222.40. Remove we approve the payment of the voucher's address.
Second.
Well, it was a paper, and I'm not going to be like the judge and say, "Ready, write it," even though. You're indicating. Okay. Item number three, insurance report, recognize insurance funds report. In that case, there's nothing significant there this morning, so it's good to be here. That's other thing. Item number four, president report, this is the amount of you give. You're always here.
I'm not sure that's a good thing, am I?
I'm not sure. It's a good thing.
Okay, this morning Amarillo National Bank already was 2.27. Tax pool was 1.930 with $407,244.11. Tax pool prime is 2.19 with $10,247,693.99. And Texas class were earning 2.25 this morning with $4,758,263.48. So, our total cash general fund this morning is $29,011,643.38.
Item number five, county clerk records archive plan, consider enact upon adopting the county clerk records archive plan for 2018-2019 annual budget.
Basically, we have to kind of rehear very much of time and ask for approval for our continuing collection of the fee that we collect, which is the following fee. And as noted on here, we have all of our land records, but we will here send probably the last night at volume one, all the way up to the current volumes loaded into our system. So, Lisa is supervisor of that department, and so they work on what's called historical or sometimes hysterical, because they're working on indexing all of those records, but it sure has been a benefit to be able to collect that fee and do it. And then, we are currently trying to, we're looking at getting some old commissioner court minutes regained, just like, just the first, like, just the history of that stuff, because it's, it's pretty interesting what was recorded back in, commissioner minutes back in the day. So, those are some of the things, huh?
That one is hysterical.
That's where the hysterical comes from. And so anyways, that's just kind of our plans, and we'll have to get quotes from vendors and those kind of things, and we'll go through them. So, that's just our future plans.
Have a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve adopting county clerk records archive plan for the 2018-2019 budget. Thank you.
At second, all in favor? Passes by zero. Next, something. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, okay. Keep. Okay, item number five, Purple Heart County, to honor and recognize five county veterans who are Purple Heart recipients and veterans who served military. And Mr. Leckwards. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, Mr. Purple Heart.
I thought that's the name, Leckwards.
John Leckwards is our state commander.
Oh, okay.
I'm Don Rothen. I appreciate being, having you here this morning to sign the proclamation for designate Parker County as a Purple Heart county. With me, I have Robert Herrera, he's our senior vice commander. Tony Flores, he's our vice commander, the charter member. And I am Don Rothen, commander of the military of Purple Heart Sector 553. Our mission aim is actually to help all veterans families throughout Panhandle. Our chapter covers actually the upper 26 counties of the Texas Panhandle. And our goal will be to eventually get all of the Texas Panhandle covered as designated as Purple Heart counties. But we are very honored this morning that Potter County Commissioner's Court wants to designate Potter County instead of Purple Heart County. It not only shows that our recipients, that, you know, you want to honor them, but actually we want it to be assembled to honor all veterans and families. So, we're very excited. I have, I do have a proclamation for you that I would like for you to read, and we'll present you with the proclamation. If it was all by your own, please.
And I'm going to allow the judge what she gets. Need the judge to sign this probably, or.
President, she is.
I wouldn't feel right doing it.
We all, you can do that later. I don't want to.
I just have a question. Potter County Commissioners Court, Parker County, Texas, whereas people of Parker County, Texas have great admiration, yet most gratitude for all men and women who serve, selfishly serve in their county and this, and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military declaration and president used and was initially created as a badge of military merit by George Washington in 1782. I didn't know that. Whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or declaration made available to the common soldier and specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid an ultimate sacrifice in combat and declared enemy of the United States of America. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices for the men and women from Potter County, Texas, who have served in the armed forces have been vital to maintain freedoms in the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. Whereas August 27, 2018 officially been designated as the day in Potter County, Texas, to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart. And then it goes on to say that I, Judge Nancy Tanner, joined the, with the Potter County Commissioners hereby proclaim Potter County, Texas, a Purple Heart county. And witness thereof here unto that audience to this proclamation, 27th day of August 2018, this be signed by all of us and eventually.
Okay, also asking for John Leckwards, commander of the Department of Texas Military of Purple Heart, playing Potter County, a Purple Heart county.
Thank you very much. Please remain standing. Thank you, please, sir. 7E, for legal services contract, consider enact upon the approval of this contract between Potter County and T D F P S, authorize the judge to sign the contract. I'm somebody who.
This is actually around, you know, for many years, and it helps to make a cost of some of the expenses in the county during its office to handle these CPS cases.
Motion to approve. Remove we approve the contract between Parker County and T D F P S and authorize the judge to sign that contract.
Second, for a quick question. Carrie, just to confirm, there's nothing significant that's changed on the grant proposal?
Actually, in prior years, we requested reimbursement on a little secretary, we were requesting two little secretaries, a charity, and an investigator issue. And I think reimbursement is about 20% if we're going to ask for those additional staff or something.
Have the increase to the staff, meaning we've got a lot of changes in county, it's kind of poor.
That question, but I was going to ask that.
The workload is. Yes, the workload is. Has a motion to approve, this second, all in favor? Or zero? Item number eight, disposition capital credit fund, consider enact upon the disposition capital credit fund received in the amount of $4,746.35, and a man authorized by 381.004, the Texas Code of Government Code. We have $4,700.
Do you know Judge Tanner had any selections in mind?
She and I have not discussed it.
Okay. Do you think it would be appropriate to pass this until she?
Yeah, we'll pass this.
Okay. Then we'll be at time to send a big recommendation as well.
Item number nine, report on the new member of Parker County, Tiered and Tiered Board Number Two.
So, Judge Tanner included in your packet the resume from P. David Walker. I'm not sure if they're in the audience today.
He couldn't be here today.
He couldn't be here, okay. So, this is an open appointment that we have on tiers two, since Judge turned his step down as a result of her new election. This is certainly open to any other recommendations, but this is someone Judge Tanner had in mind. I don't personally know this individual, but certainly I'm sure qualified. We are open for other nominations, but we would like to take action, if possible, at court today. We do mean that for, for tiers two. So, if there are any discussions, I can't speak to this person directly.
Has he been approached about serving?
I think so, yes.
Yes, he's very interested.
I would recommend that we close the nominations and accept P. David Walker as a member of the tier two.
Okay.
Second, I have a form of motion. Second, I second, Mr. Church, all in favor? Passes by zero. Okay, item number 10, Third Annual Parker County Report, recognize the Third Annual Parker County Report.
So, this will be a quick update, but you do have a copy of this. This came later than the year based on regard to final numbers. So, a couple of housekeeping things. The idea behind this is that it don't have any changes, that we finalize this and really get it available online, not printing too many copies of this. The plan, obviously, since the administrative side of the law enforcement center has moved, is to start working with the designer maybe at the end of this year, because that map on the second page shows reference to it. So, we want to kind of clean that up. There were a few departments when we started, started this three years ago, almost four years ago at this point, that wanted to be included in the write-up on page two. We picked some of our bigger departments, and so we'll probably rotate some of that out. So, I expect to start working on this probably December of this year, and then get a annual report earlier in the year 2019. So, the only things that have significantly changed are the numbers to the left and the graphs. We, I work closely with Carrie on this, who really provides the content, because this matches anything that goes into our budget process, and anything that's in our audit is really where this comes from. And the rest of the content on page two stays pretty consistent from year to year. If there are any changes, we can certainly discuss those. If not, I don't think we need a formal motion, but I just wanted to bring this before the court before we finalized it and got it available online. Bring the chief.
Item number 11, welcome government corporation to hear an update on the W C.
This will be quick as well. We met, I like to just put a standing agenda, I belong anytime we meet. Two big things is that there's a lot of discussion on budget as a global sense, but really, we are representative from the ball team talking about ticket sales, that they are selling above their expectation at this point. We had a lot of discussion around what I call after the honeymoon period. I do expect ticket sales to be moving swiftly, year one, but what does that look like kind of after? So, there was some discussion about new people moving to Amarillo. Jerry spoke on behalf of the city and said they are still on schedule, as you see, not far from us. So, those are really the big updates, but anytime we have a meeting, I like to just put a standing item. Okay?
Potter County Extension, number 12, we'd like to hear an update on the Potter County Extension Office.
Good morning, you're having me. I'm really excited to share what I'm doing in entire county with the corporate extension program. From you, I just think that most of you know, I work for Parity University in Prairie, Texas. So, I'm part of the corporate extension program as opposed to AgroLife. So, I work in five main areas, health and wellness within the county, child, no B C, financial literacy, safety, and 4H. Oh, 4H, 4A and 4H. And all these, what I'm passing out are my personal members, starting from January up until I guess August, right? So, those are my personal members. It's broken down in all kinds of ways, but you can see it's pretty fascinating what that system can do. But I wanted to highlight some of the programs that I'm doing throughout the county and some changes that, or some advances that we've been making. So, the first one is in our senior citizen area. So, I've been working with our senior citizens at Westley Community Center, and they're fantastic. We've been doing matter of balance exercises once a week. I've seen improvements. I've had many of my clients telling me, "Well, this boy was that I can dance, I can dance now, I can do, I can dance," or. And also, we've been walking around Owlville Park, and I just wanted to pay mercy for her help. There was a trash can that sat, there's a sidewalk that goes all the way around Owlville Park, and there was a trash can that sat right in the middle of the sidewalk. And my seniors and their little walkers and their cane couldn't get past, they had to go around this trash can, and with the help of mercy and this community, we got that trash can changed, so now they can go around the park. But they're really enjoying the exercises. In fact, I, I made my plan increasing physical activity, because I just don't want to limit it to simply the exercises. So, we've been doing some walking in June. I took them to W T and took them to the pool, and they had so much fun. I even had a 72-year-old man go down the slide. You know, it was pretty fun.
That was nonsense.
And so, they just have a lot of fun. They're looking forward to going back again and working with W T to go back. So, they're just a really active group, and I want to make sure that they maintain that activity. The second thing I want to talk about is a board program. So, I have over 300, and well, now it's increased, so probably close to 400 4H members and Prairie View. And this is because I've added Maverick Boys and Girls Club, and then Wesley Community Center has a group that they do summer programs as well as after school. And so, this has really increased our number four, Potter County, and I'm excited about that. Right now, it was simply a summer program and after school, but I now want, because we've established it, I want to get them involved in actual contest. And so, this summer, we've been working, I did egg and chick at Wesley Community Center and Maverick in this word. You take the egg and you incubate it, incubate it, and then you educate them on the process of becoming, or starting as an egg and going to a chick and everything that goes along with that process. I ended up keeping at Wesley Community Center, I ended up keeping the incubator in the, in the senior center. And they were probably more excited than the kids about this whole process. So, I kind of took them through this whole process as well, and that was kind of fun. They, you know, the day that they, they're starting to hatch is always, they kind of deal, you can always get calls or friends saying, "You think we're going to do, we're going to have maybe?" So, that's kind of fun. Also, my childhood obesity program, I had a fun activity day at Maverick Boys and Girls Club, where we had stations and we did knockout. We did the smoothie bike, which is also nutrition and stay physically fit. When they have the bike, they ride the bike, and it has a blender on the back, and it blends through, it's kind of cool. They have a lot of fun with that. And we did relay races, and then we did Zumba. So, we did all these stations. It was kind of chaotic, but evidently that's the reason why that mattered with all those kids. So, that, so I did, I'm doing that through my childhood obesity. So, food safety, I want to move on, so that's number two. Food, number three is food safety. I do food safety, food handlers class, food safety and handlers class, I work for solutions once a month. And it's kind of slow going, but I'll find groups that find me online. I need to do better job of promoting that, but they'll find me online. I've had Helen Park I S D, their, their food service cafeteria group came. I've had a group from Collinsworth County come, their home delivery for seniors program. And so, I just, just groups and pockets of people that are getting involved in one day to learn that point force solution. But on a broader note, in terms of food, food safety, District One, or this is including AgroLife District One, won a national award for food safety. I'll be presenting next month in San Antonio for this national award, and it's a big deal. We get a national award, and I was part of that effort. They do all kinds of activities with their food safety. I want to learn from them, or realize why they now won this national award, and I've got to get, I'm going to get up to speed on that, but that's kind of exciting. Then lastly, I wanted to talk about, about moving forward, what I have upcoming for the rest of the year. So, in terms of my childhood obesity program or plan, I'll hold a childhood obesity symposium October 16th, and I'm collaborating with Texas Tech Health Sciences Center. And they'll be talking about, many of the doctors, we have a pharmacist talking about how, what they're using in terms of pharmacy to combat this. We have a psychologist who talks about, you know, the process, I guess, how growing up that way, or a lot of the issues with childhood obesity come from, I used as a kid. So, they're talking about that. I have an internist, I have a holistic doctor, who will be talking about some holistic approaches to combat childhood obesity. So, I'm excited to get, to have to offer this to the community, really free, so, and lunch provided. So, I expect all of y'all to be there, everybody. It's from Monday, October 16th. And then the last thing I have upcoming, that's just something that Prairie A M has decided to take on, is an L E P plan, which is Language English Proficiency Plan. And so, this is our opportunity to make sure that all our programs are available to our community, no matter the language barrier. And as you guys know, Potter County, specifically Amarillo, has a high ranking population, so I'll be working with Prairie View to make sure that we have interpreters that can translate it, so that we can offer these programs to all of the community. So, those are just some of the things that I have been doing this year. And I just, I just wanted to close with just this story from, from the sweet Wesley seniors. They take trips periodically, and they go on to Oklahoma City, and Carla, who's the director of the senior, senior program, texted me a picture of the group they were at the zoo, and they went to the same river in Oklahoma City. And I said, "Thank you so much for including me, thank you for sending this." And she said, she said, "No problem, you were one of us." And so, as an agent, that's what I aspire to be, is, is one of the community, one of the people that I serve. So, that's all I have.
A lot of it went to outline here, you don't, you don't do anything.
You know, it really does come to, come in waves. You know, summer's always busy, and it's chaotic, like, against programs, and then you just kind of go down and then up, but I'm always looking for more.
Thank you.
There is a category of participation, phrase that you mentioned, that some of our staff, which is a little bit maybe outdated, I don't know exactly, but words being at the, we intend to zoom on.
Just like, yeah.
If you would kind of explain what's going to be.
You don't know we said.
I know it is, but.
That's true, but you should win. We need a five-minute Zoom. I'll come back next, I'll, I actually have a volunteer who teaches Zoom, it's, you don't dance in class, but I'm taking you to putting, dance, dance and exercise, yeah.
I just want to.
Thank you very much.
We'll be a few months.
Over a few months. Thank you very much.
My next item on the agenda is from 13 sheriffs and constable fees, consider enact upon setting specific, on Sterling Street, Constable Redd, who will do the constable teaching for 2019, Constable Brown.
I think there's a clarification on the tiers, and Commissioner Horsing will give a brief explanation on what would be in tier one and tier two. It's really simple, it's not going to be that complicated. We don't take, I mean, our whole house, and what's stored, the whole service bond, which is impossible. However, that's what I have down, that's the majority of what we do have to get in register suspension, and that's just a fourth of approval.
Yeah, and this is just a follow-up item. I know we approved the fee last time, but we did have a follow-up to somehow document what the variation in fees were. So, I think Carrie, I handed a copy as well to you. I just want to make sure this meets what you would expect from, you know, ID perspective, and if there's any other clarification, that was my request to Constable Astronix, just to make sure we had this, because that fee was fairly new for the court.
And we did look at, plus, we have always had.
Okay. Just a follow-up.
I agree.
I don't know, we, we.
I think you have those to the, the comp over.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve. We're going to approve of the fees, as stated by.
We're going to be approving of the fees, that's the block, Constable Astrid. Uh, paid into the charges and constable's fee.
Second.
All of those. That's as far as I'm. Item fourteen, disposition of contract, consider approval of a proposed contract with Ronald Lacy M D for medical services that's tied into detention center. Chair.
When Dr. Lacy had been a doctor, rather than a, you know, for, considering, since I've, I wonder, if you've never had a contract, it's always been a negotiation. He decided he wanted a contract and I think that's probably an opt, a little bit more easier to contract.
The contract is.
Is this a contact, a contract we drafted or he drafted and we just reviewed it?
We received it. I'm not sure who that, I reviewed it.
Okay.
The prices, compensation stayed at a, a page.
Yeah, fifty thousand. Is that what's in our budget? Here's fifty thousand. Okay.
The contract is terminable on thirty days.
I'm moving to reapprove the proposed contract with Ronald Lacy M D for immediate medical services that are part of our detention center.
Second question. You found that?
Oh, yes. Second, all in favor?
Thank you, sir.
Item fifteen, disposition of abandoned property, consider approval disposition of the following abandoned property, two thousand six O X C ninety, I believe it being the VIN number Y V four C Y five nine two zero six one two nine 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 five.
This is a vehicle that was on traffic stop and had some narcotics in it. We've since filed with the county attorney's office that this is an abandoned property because the way it's being owned and we'll use it. It's a Volvo, yeah, it's kind of a fancy little car, but we cannot resell it. It has a compartment in it which makes it illegal to resell or to trade it or anything.
That's what I didn't.
A compartment that's been added to the vehicle. All the drugs.
Take the compartment out.
Yeah.
Anyway, it'll be one that we just, we won't be until it's all ordered and more of a pressure or I don't know. I'm just.
Question, we can go into the question. In a situation such as this, you have not only drugs, but also, I'd say, a lot of money that's in that, the farmer's, who assumes control of that? As far as the, as far as who takes the control of the, I say we have a hundred thousand dollars in that process. Who actually has control of this? Is it the county or the city?
The criminal case was referred to the district attorney's office. I think they seized the money, they declined to prosecute criminally. So that left, the leftover property, which had altered compartment, to try and dispose of it. So that's what we're trying to do is dispose of the property that has the altered compartment.
So who gives the money?
The DA's office actually seized them.
They, they, they gets a portion of it and then the other portion of it. There's a split, sixty thousand.
So we are keeping the vehicle or we are disposing the vehicle?
We're going to keep it, use it for our.
Okay. So that adds to our fleet?
Yes.
Add to insurance, or are we insuring it?
Actually, the way the insurance works is it must be added on. There's enough change in our fees until we have that inventory evaluation or so, our next review. So right now there's no cost to add.
How do we keep track from an inventory perspective of which ones don't fall in the rotation list over the years? They got, I mean, I don't think that is a problem, you know, one year, two. They never go in. Okay.
Those are seized vehicles that are going to our rotation, our vehicle in the quarter as far as.
Right. Okay. Okay.
Have a motion.
I make a motion to reapprove disposition of the abandoned property twenty-six Volvo X C ninety.
Second. Second. All in favor? Number sixteen, disposition of property, consider approval disposition of the following forfeited property, two thousand and two Mercury Saban automobile being VIN number one M E F M five five S seven two eight six three two two eight four.
Same kind of thing, my body's deal that we seize the vehicle on, we turn it over to us. We use it for some, our courthouse security, we got to turn some sick houses around, we should report to state. So we use that for now. It's, it's pretty, thrust it out on the bottom, so it'll probably be one that we combine with another one to get rid of and then we'll just get one vehicle back. Right now we just.
This one can't be resolved.
Yes.
Move to approve the disposition of, of the forfeited property, two thousand and two Mercury Saban automobile VIN number, et cetera, et cetera. Second. All in favor? Number sixteen, employment item two, consider that following employment, I have a road bridge reservation where our rise is still more effective August twenty-second, twenty-eighteen. The information technology base scale increase for Chelsea Green effective August twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen. Do these individually, are we doing together? Okay. I have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the employment item just presented.
Sure. Second, all in favor? Okay, and next, eighteen, Part of County Project, here, report, very Part of County Projects, take any introductions or anything.
Out of the air.
Can I report David? I don't have any information, so you might want to give us.
It's all very good, I can tell you that.
And I don't want to hear.
We have five hundred and ninety-nine, we have six hundred and two people in our deal. Thing else, we have ninety-one, selling count has five hundred and seven, which is eighty-four percent, minus two hundred and fifty-six, which is a nine percent.
Yeah.
So we got no one, no one anywhere. Now we're trying to find a place to put them. We just had the contract with we do last week and we called them this morning and they have two different availability. So everybody else is the same deal. Calling everywhere from Plankview up north.
Keep a bunch of these to the curb, so then?
Well, I'm, I'm really hoping this supervisor at least will say, well, hurry up and get here. I don't know if I wait till I. It's, 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 and it's been this way for the last three months. I don't, I don't know. You know, back in the day, we could kind of see the season, the things would go up and down and the crisis would come up first. Yeah, it's just pretty, absolutely. But it's something that we've gotten elsewhere since. We're going to get trouble with the state of the country.
Thank you. Okay. Number twenty, budgets and tax rate, budget for year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. A, conduct public hearing on proposed budget. B, adopt budget, see, consider for approval, Part of County Tax Rate, three point eight zero, reflected in the budget. D, set dates for two public hearings of the tax rate and confirm date for five hundred dollars in tax. How do we want to do this? So.
Talking of public hearings.
Want to open the public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
Um, Carrie, you're squeaky wickled because I'm squeaky. I'm here. When I got a copy of the budget, it, with no changes, it did not have what I had originally done for the increase for the criminal supervisor, nor did it have my lapse position that I said I was going to give away if I got this. So I'm coming back again to exploring. I, when I realized that we needed, that we, the assistant supervisor had not been in place for two years, we needed that. So I looked at the budget to see where I could get, and that's when I thought about lapsing position and asking for the funds to be out of that. But also, there are five positions that last year in the budget were mostly lower because they were brand new. These now, these five, there's three in the department's place and two in the jury room. They are now fully trained employees. So I'm coming back again to ask that you find my, the assistant supervisor and raise these employees. Carrie wrote me, she said, with that one position, in which you were giving fifty-three thousand dollars, and it's not unreasonable for you to ask, use fourteen thousand for incentive workers, which includes fridges, to equalize all of your six positions. I think still be coming ahead with thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. So there I am. I guess if I don't get this, I, I, I hope my position back.
I'm sorry.
I said, if I don't get this, I hope to at least get the position back. That wasn't the changes. I had, I proposed a change.
So we back, on the circuit, we back square one?
Well.
With the, also part.
Yeah, and Commissioner, you know, there was some big movement, the court that you were asked to do your procedure. And one of the things that makes me a little hesitant, Commissioner, is off the motion that you made to take all of these positions off the table. So if this entry reintroduces it, I feel certain there will be other comments that will be reintroduced.
That's the point, making, we need.
And that's really nice. I just wanted to get us all on the same page. That's what I think with it.
Because I, I can't do with as huge focus to do other, other departments, didn't know anything first, and I guess, you know, right my position.
Commissioner Kelly, this is to you. I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I was trying to get a feel of the vibe, we could make a call, this road, saying that a lot of frustration and everybody was coming and wanted to try to get on my loop, but I don't want to end up coming, baby, I was bad.
I was, I got to the point where we got to be asking and asking and it just wouldn't stop. So I said, well, just, just cancel everything and just start from square one, which we do. And at this time, I don't see any reason to change anything. So, even if it's status quo.
So you gave me my position, fifty-three thousand dollar position.
So, talk to me about that, Carrie, and you said, give me back.
Well, that was my proposal for the budget. You went to one, I, I, my, that position's in my budget.
Do you need that position?
We always need help.
So what was the reason for giving that position?
Because I could see that I needed funds for these positions. And I thought, what can we do? You know, we always, we, as that, Commissioner, we are, we are boxing, we are indexing, we are doing management, all that. We can do that. You know, frankly, I think this is really unfair. I do everything that is expected of you to do, right? I save the county three thousand dollars and I'm still willing to do what I think. I believe somebody can manage it. I believe, I understand your idea. I understand where it came from because I've seen the industry of that, but I have not done that.
How long have you been without a position?
About five months. And when it happened, supervisor wanted it and I said, let's wait. I would like to try to do this budget.
But I'll kind of get you to do this, it's a position that you wanted to give up for money to go to hospital.
Yeah. You want to aim to be good and you try to do it and then you're penalized. So I guess, can we fit ours today?
What I mean, I can appreciate your argument and advocate, but it makes sense. At all. It is what it is, Commissioner. Your motion and approval of that motion.
They're being.
We opened it down, we opened it up the door. I'm not opening any. Well, I mean, if we go that route, I'm just trying to, if that would appreciate where we are.
My predecessor, my better chance with you.
Well, just to go over, I wasn't here, but I, I did.
You know, I wanted to be original, but I wanted to be original, Commissioner's Court, you said, but I did that. You know, it's all right.
And I think that happened in various departments. I don't think that was just your request. There are a lot of departments that were affected by that.
Were willing to give a, a position and money.
Certainly. I think that's true. And, and I would agree with your comments, Commissioner, as, especially as we think about our taxpayer, it is difficult to look at a position that was going to be give up, give up for other salary increases. And if the salary increases don't happen, then we need the position. Because at the end of the day, we have to report to the taxpayers. And I'll say what we've said through this whole budget process, this has been extremely difficult this year. There's a lot of emotion and certainly, especially as we talk about positions and people, and I respect that, and I respect people's opinion.
Do you read my office? You can see what happens. You can see if a position, if you have given up. That position is always needed.
Sure. Thank you.
I have a second on my floor. Anyone else here that other positions that offered, other departments that offered to give up positions to which I've settled, brought to keep their positions. Caroline is the only one who actually lost her position and we got the adjustment.
What other departments kept theirs? Carrie, the facilities. So one other department kept the position and didn't do any of the salary increases.
And that was.
So I see your, I see your point, Caroline, certainly.
So, that makes sense. Now, we've allowed that, again, certainly the breaking president, we, we took. So, as I understood the motion, was to not give any of the special bases, like give everybody the same. I didn't remember anything in that motion that said that we were, had an acquisition. It was a statement made by Judge. We had that position. So, when you say cut that position, what position are you referring to? Caroline, Caroline's position. So we missed that in the translation. In the minutes, it doesn't say anything about, minus that position.
Okay, so the first motion by Commissioner Kelly that day, it's reflected on second, the second to the last page of the minutes that are included in the packet. And at the end of it, he says, however, these raises are not going to affect and we just cancel the raises and give everybody whatever percentage we vote to give them. And then Judge Tanner made a motion that we do two percent plus twelve hundred dollars across the board increase for everybody, leave max positions in, Carolines are out, and raise taxes by a penny and a half, by five point one eight percent from last year.
So what was, what was the distinction there? Leave facilities in, but.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know what the, that was made by Judge Tanner. That was made by Judge Tanner.
What was the court's interpretation of that? So that was a motion?
That was a motion by her. That's, yes.
And it was true?
Yes, it was. Well, three one.
Excuse me?
Three one vote.
You know, I think, I wish. You know, I think, I wish the reasonable minds would prevail in sort of finishing what you think I'm doing. You know, I, I...
Any other public people?
We'll somewhat, uh, come in here, I think, uh, and, I wish we made, uh, I think, uh, simple allow of, of, of course, to keep, expect, look out. So I can, I can understand what Caroline's position advocated, that is, you know, certainly, uh, leading toward that way, so we don't have to adopt a particular, a special position.
Um, Todd and Carrie, especially considering the next item for review by the court, um, I know that we will have some more public comment, um, allocated through this process before we adopt the final budget. Go ahead, sorry.
Our budget is two days.
It will be two days, okay.
The tax rate, you'll have...
Okay, okay. So, um, to that point, I think you answered my question, is if there is discussion, that needs to be vetted now before that's, uh, adopted, if that position's going to be added back in, or it will stay status quo, and then move towards adopting the final budget today, and then moving towards the tax rate. Correct? Okay. I just want to make sure where we were tying the lines a little bit.
The only, the only thing I'd say about our last meeting, and yet, emotional for a lot of this, me included, um, so I think that, uh, some things, sometimes unfortunate things happen. We just either have to go back and change that, or live with it. I can do either.
That's a, just, let's look at the, uh, the, and possibly how we can categorize it, relooking at that and changing it.
Well, I do think Caroline, I mean, she has, she has a valid point, especially when she's comparing herself to another department that kept a position. I think our new budget process of, uh, spelling out every position by line item requires they come to the court really before that money is moved around, which is why I think this budget process was so emotional, and every time these, these come to the court, they really are very emotional. So I, I say that only to say, if dollars were going to be moved around again, it would come to this court, right? That wouldn't happen. If we added the position in, the dollars wouldn't be moved around, kind of behind the scenes. They would come to the court for us to vet. That has always been, I feel like, the slippery slope. These open positions are what has been used in the past to move dollars from one thing to the other without us noticing. So I do think she has a valid concern, especially as she compares to another department, if there were dollars going to be moved around, it would come to the court anyway to be vetted. So I, I'm with you, Commissioner Church, and emotional, I've put myself in that same category as well, and I, I could go either way.
If, if I can...
Please?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm just saying, also, what Caroline was trying to do prior was to eliminate that position and raise up our lowest salary. Um, but she wanted to wait until budget, and especially, they do need a supervisory position, assistant. Um, and that's just adding, I think it's four thousand dollars, to a current person that is already working, and just giving her the additional responsibility with that additional pay.
Not adding additional person?
Not adding a new person, no. Adding money to an already existing position.
Yeah.
And in doing so, to do that, to not come and try and, you know, spread all that, you know, before budget, she thought she would wait until budget time, that way we'd be using not taxpayer monies, our money, for a vacant position to do that, and then get rid of that position. And, uh, before we even did that, we, all of us supervisors got together, couldn't be handled it. And so we waited a while, you know, kind of like Jack of All Trains, where you need me, I can go. And we've been able to, you know, process the work, um, and so we had another supervisor meeting, and, I mean, it was all of us together, there were six of us together making this decision. And so we thought, yeah, we can do this. Get rid of that position, give criminal a much-needed assistant to somebody who is already working there, just elevate their pay to the other assistants.
So I get this, I'm following through.
So now I can...
I'm not talking about adding additional personnel. I thought that's what we, I thought Caroline's, uh, argument was because of the increased volume of work that was out there, we'd be looking for additional personnel, and I thought that's what the argument was, versus, uh, uh, sort of, uh, uh, cramping the facilities.
Well, what ended up happening is they took our position anyway, but never gave us the funds for increasing that one person to the assistant. So if you're not going to spread our money around, how come you took our position? We could use that person. I, I know, um, emotions are at a really high rate now.
Okay, so I'm back to, to, to me, we do that, we open up the all departments that...
That's different. We were going to consume that person, that vacant position for.
And that's lawful, I mean, I can appreciate that, again, the other departments throughout the, uh, county, also, we do that, we do it for one, and we open it up.
But then when it didn't happen, and then we realized, they didn't let us move that money around, plus they took our position too, so now what are we going to do? We can't raise that group to the assistant, because the money's not there.
The argument following line out to, to reestablish her position, something to do with facilities.
Well, but I think that's a different, that's a different...
And I don't think she's...
Because then you open it up to everyone else.
Reestablishing a position.
Without going back and listening to the tapes, but I'm trying to recall what Caroline stood up and said, that because of the twelve hundred dollar raise plus two percent, that that prepared the, the lower end people, and that she would have to be playing with her. Um, I mean, that's, that's how I recall it, but I could be completely wrong.
It's a different argument. I don't know what they're going to do, understanding clearly now, and I can understand frustration and the emotion that Caroline was experiencing, maybe not...
She's upset about is that raises, raises, and better.
Either not keep it if you gave the raises, or...
Well, actually, she really doesn't want the position. If we could raise that one person, that additional money, I think, four thousand dollars, I, I, you know, I really don't know. Um, she took my paper. So, that would, we're not asking for the position back. We were under the understanding that we would give it up if we could, you know, just raise that one.
Raise the, the current employee.
Yes.
And I think that's your argument, Commissioner, that...
No, one employee.
Any, any additional employee?
Yes. Raising that salary for one position, yes.
So I think that follows right in line with your, your motion, given what I hear, but still, it seems like that's where the motion must be driven. Uh, not that it, uh, it's balanced, it's always, uh, the increase for any department.
So my motion was for every, uh, increases that we've given, that everybody got, that's it.
And, right. And which, that's fine, but didn't get our position back.
Really, and then Judge Tanner came behind you, so basically, I mean, just my understanding, my thoughts, pretty much what you said kind of, I mean, she kind of canceled out what you said, because then she came back, and she was specific in her, her motion, and it said, if the two percent, twelve hundred dollars across the board for everybody, leave Mike's position in, Carolines are out, and raise taxes by a penny.
And that's the first I was, I was pulled into the court. Why was the distinction of leaving facilities, pushing it in, and taking Caroline's out?
And if I, let's speak on Judge Tanner's behalf, she was wanting to not put Caroline's position back in, but give the adjustments, because she is just trying to get her people all equal across the board. It's not necessarily a pay, very specific person, it's just to keep her positions equal, and then give the supervisor, assistant supervisor, criminal department, like the other departments. And after that, Judge Tanner is in favor, making those adjustments. Bringing all the positions, integral positions to the same pay.
All, all as in...
Yes, it, it amounts to having about a thousand nine hundred dollars in total, uh, every position, but she came up with a salary of three thousand. So can someone, I would better by taking the position and giving the adjustments.
Well, and do that, again, that was, we, we do that for one, it'll do a follow. Anybody that does want to... So, Court, what is that, uh, I mean...
I am not a factor going in, just to get evidence. That's my, that's my position.
So I don't think, oh, being heard, Judge Tanner's motion, it, it didn't cancel out your motion, correct?
No.
And four percent cost of living is listed in the budget for the employees.
Two percent.
Two percent. Oh, two percent plus this one.
Four hundred cost, cost, cost. Plus two percent. Why was that?
You should have been here.
Well, and I guess the other thing that she was asking is if, in, in that finding, we're not going to get the increase for, uh, the eleven thousand dollars for, you know, bringing everybody else up, if, if she could have her position.
I see the argument, and I'm going to make sense.
I, I, I do think you will reintroduce, there were several departments that had this discussion, I mean, there were several affected by this, like, oh, they're not, they're not just like...
So why did we, uh, why did we, uh, re, you know, the facilities, the, the...
That was Judge Tanner's motion, I can't, I can't really speak to that.
What's court voting on? So, why would we, you know, did he push back any more than, uh...
Okay, all right, so I think we probably just need some general direction of whether we want to adopt the budget as it is at this moment, with all that dialogue, or if we do want to introduce it, or very specific, unique, looking at Caroline, I think the ask is that four thousand on the one position that already exists, it's already in-house, and then you let it go, that's kind of one option, but it does introduce some dialogue, because there are other departments that requested for some salary increases. So if we go there, I think we need to be prepped to at least look at the other ones and say, are there any other special circumstances, in all fairness, or we stay locked to where the budget is.
Can we lock into, uh, approving the budget today? This is the thing. You know, I don't know why you couldn't...
Maybe on Thursday, during our special meeting.
Be on Thursday, maybe, for those budgets. Can we do that?
And I'm just saying...
Oh, we're looking at, and looking at more, obviously, than exploring, or... I bet I have the judge, uh, hopefully, who can put me here, and...
Probably, maybe, we should see how much more discussions that...
Right.
Can you absorb and handle all that, I'm sure. How about, yeah. The other issue that you brought up to us about the retirees, integration, that, that...
No, that, that was just informational, because we had several questions about the topic in the first instance.
So there's been no discussion on that issue here?
So Carrie, if we, um, look at a timeline of Thursday, when we're already on the agenda, or they moved it just this morning, I think, did it get moved in?
Tuesday.
Okay, to Thursday morning. I just saw that coming into court, I do know, Carrie.
Yeah, the seven to hour posting period was, I accidentally missed, so we had to post this coming.
So if we look at these items for Thursday, would we still stay on the timeline with the calendar and our other post fees requirements?
Okay, once you actually, supposedly, actually, you'll have to get that published in the newspaper, probably the earliest you can get on Thursday. I guess you'll always be getting that published, on the floor, sharing... Hello, we need Thursday, and it's already ready to go, we get it to the paper Thursday afternoon, we might get it Saturday, so I might have to check the paper received.
Okay. Just so we have Judge Tanner's perspective, and we can't...
I don't think, I don't think they're going to change that, I figure, I don't think it can work.
They may not.
It's going to put ourselves in...
I just wanted to know, uh, of all, it's my...
Just, just post that, please.
And can you mention...
The first hearing in the tax court has to be seven days after the rest of...
So that's...
Right, no, this is posted on Saturday, seven days, we do that, which is, it's on Saturday, so the ten would still work, more than the first one, right?
Or the tax...
So the calendar could still stay aligned?
It could.
Okay.
If Ted, you mentioned, you said about law, pull it out, uh, explain about what it, but it would, it would, that all... Wait, wait, first, uh, this specific issue is not going to change the tax rate, it's a legal cap addition.
Are we going to not attach it today?
We have to propose it.
Oh, not propose, or...
Friendship, then... But you can't propose it until act, the budget is going to be...
Yeah. Eleven thousand is just for, just to bring the lower level up, or for the four thousand and the lower level.
All of that, the, the assistant supervisor and bringing the five, the whole positions up.
See, and in my opinion, Commissioner, I think the four thousand is the only thing that's kind of on the table, because I remember some dialogue that you're referencing around this flat rate of two percent, and all of those should be brought up anyway, that accomplished, what she was trying to accomplish with that original write-up.
But then we, a list is still one thing, we're bringing this up.
No, but, I hate to bring up whole stuff. This is what really got everything going, is when we said, okay, give these raises, and they're not going to give whatever other raise we give to those that gave that special raise.
You mean, if we operate a range to certain positions, they are not...
So if we gave the four thousand dollar raise, they wouldn't give the two plus the two.
Right, she was all right with that, and we were going, and we weren't going to take the additional, to spread what we had, and we weren't going to ask for the...
And it looked, really, I had this, no satisfaction, because we can never get satisfied with what we're getting, all right? So that's...
That's what you wish we...
Absolutely, to this other...
And if I may, again, um, and everybody very appreciative of what we're getting, but those five positions, even without, I mean, they'll, they will still be that under the rest of, they, they will continually...
If they're the newest employees, is that right?
Yes.
I think it's the... I think it's the president.
Long journey always means more money.
Yeah, and it's the president, and we introduce it, not certainly his position, it's everything else that he's sworn in after that. And we understand that, and if it can't be changed in the budget, which is fine, then just, we could use that position, and they can do all of our archiving and boxing.
You're, you're, this is, you're.
That is the one thing, why did we?
Be involved in that position, to get that position back.
Pardon?
That's, that's the, uh, the breath of your policy, is that if you're not gonna get the, the, but bring that position back is good, is lost. Is that right?
We were using that position as a way to bring that, the salaries up. And so even though we assumed, when we didn't get the position, you know, when they took it, that all of those would be brought up, and when we got the budget from Carrie, we, Caroline realized, my position's not on the right here. So it was just a very emotional court, and we just, she wished she had applied out of that.
Let me say something. And maybe I'm not up to it, I have to ask, Commissioner. For, you know, there's a lot of us out here in this audience, we've been, no disrespect to y'all, we've been doing this budget longer than I've been, Commissioner. Look at it, anyway, be creative that we can. A few years ago, you and I talked about doing salary surveys. It's never happened, it always comes up at budget time, doing salary surveys. We never get around to doing it. Caroline did what she did, I jumped on the bandwagon. I had that position in order to try to give raises to some of my employees, because we cannot get them up where they need to be. Is this unfair to the single departments out there? Yes, it is. You've got some elected officials in the department heads, it's one person or three people, it's unfair to them. So that's the only reason that I did it, to try to find a creative way to give them a raise. You did give me my position back, and I appreciate that. With all fairness to Caroline, I think she needs her position back, too. And just leave it at that.
That's what the argument is, I think that can, since we've done that, it'll be, it'll be more press, not to thoroughly do it over the department then. And put that in the, the whole, uh, array of requests. That was in there, I understand. If it didn't, if it failed, you'd get that position back. So how can we allow one and not the other?
My only comments I would add to that is on her write-up that she presented is, she's not necessarily, she didn't ask for the position to fill it, she asked for the position to move the dollars around.
That's right.
Two very different things. Matt, uh, I'm sorry, Mike, I think from your perspective, you're looking at the position to potentially fill it?
Yeah.
Okay. Very, two very different things, in my opinion. If we're allocating a position to divide our money, that's very different than allocating a position that is gonna be filled.
But we didn't, I mean.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying they're two different, two different arguments.
That's not wrong, I, I would say, if we did for one, as far as we established, we keep that position, how can we not do it for the other?
Well, I was just gonna say. Well, we keep people coming in and saying, I'm gonna fill it. Well, we gotta feel, well, she was honest with us, and so, I don't know, it's a, it's a conundrum.
Of course, a preference would be to give those employees that money, and then revert the rest of the money back into the county, um, but, you know.
If we gave her money back, it'd be, or give the position back. Fifty thousand?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, and they're asking for eleven. Okay, I think we're, we're not gonna make any decisions today, so let's move this to Thursday. And I think, can we get it on the, those, is it too late to get it on the notice?
I think you can revise the notice, is that right?
I can't, I can't, I'll just amend it, I guess, I'm already filed it.
Then it will have to be after this, after this time, in nearly seventy-two hours.
We'll have to meet after eleven, whenever you post it, instead of eight o'clock or nine o'clock, whenever. Right, and then we also run into the problems that the ACH file is already gonna be a day late, our payroll file. So, um, I've got to get it in as early Thursday as I can as possible, because we're already in the next step.
And you can do that, right? That, that doesn't really use up, for getting that in.
If, I mean, like, eleven o'clock, but if we go till the come day before it's approved, then I can get an ACH file. Your motion should be the first thing on the agenda, you should know that by eleven oh one, would be my guess. Right? I mean, that, that, you're asking for the payroll. As long as you may get them, so many in our payroll out, then I'll, I'll be right, and come back.
We're doing, we can do the favorable at nine, and then come back at eleven.
If you're gonna have a hearing on Thursday to adopt the proposed budget, you're gonna have to know, you're gonna have to know before Thursday what the proposed budget is. So that decision needs to be made today. If you're not gonna change the proposed budget, then you can go ahead and approve it today. If you're gonna change the pro, proposed budget, it needs to be changed today, so that can be heard, prepared, right?
How is that any different, though, than today? Right, we're just holding the item.
Okay, you have to have seven days.
Yeah, and we've had the hearing, so the hearing occurred today. And the only items that are moving are items B and C. We all set item D for the dates.
If we secretly, uh, just move that connectivity, we'll move out.
Well, could you have to resist?
We'll be hearing a different proposed budget. And the quarter's seven days.
Well, the judge's proposal is already on the court, that can make changes on that proposed budget.
So it's amend, we can amend the proposed budget.
But you need to do that.
Do we have to do that today, or by Thursday?
Well, we've had to announce, we've been brought back to announce that. But you can't, you can't wait till Thursday to change, to change. It's gotta be on the ballot.
In the open.
We can do it, we can follow the proposed budget changes.
You don't, you're not sure. So what would you, as our legal advisor, what would you advise us to do at this point?
I would advise you, I would advise the motion to adopt the proposed budget, and see what the voters do.
I want to, can we, uh, that can be amended? Once the proposed is, is accepted, is that right? What move, are we exempt the proposed budget?
It was. I have a question. Right, the second, uh, for my, this is possible.
Yeah, you need a second.
Second for discussion. You have a question?
I see where you can answer stuff.
I think your question was on the proposed, what flexibility do we have?
Right, what if we, uh, what if we, uh, cut deadline?
Give me today, during the vote.
You don't have a, you have not announced.
Right, it's a, it's a favorable.
Or I'll, or I'll be with the timeline, and the office staff, it's been, uh, uh, a very different way that we can have it taken care of.
Commissioner, maybe we should take the vote and see if that's something we need to discuss.
Motion and a second.
And the motion is to adopt the final budget as it present, as it, the proposed budget. Yeah, I'm sorry, proposed budget. As it's currently slated, no changes.
Right.
Okay.
I think we have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Okay, guys, that can be amended if.
By the way, I have a motion, Carrie, read, read the.
One, one upstairs.
Okay.
Right, item C.
Item C, consider for approval, property tax increase of three point eight zero reflected in. Consider approval. So we need a motion on that. I would weigh in for the property tax increase of three point eight percent. Motion approved, second.
Question. By my extension, the prime vote, uh, my, because this is a part of the budget, uh, then I, my guess, my vote is still, it's like.
No, uh, it's, it's, sorry, I'm making, I'm making, I'm making a mistake. He had a worry about, I have a question about this. And that, that is a pretty, it's a separate one.
We did have the tax, the tax rate at six point, six, eight point five percent, and per one hundred value, which is part of that motion.
So the increase is three point eight zero percent, and we have a motion, I'll second that motion.
All of those in favor? Passes four zero. Will we read along? Okay, set the dates for two public hearings on the tax rate, confirm the date for the final vote adopting the tax. These dates that we have on the calendar, okay.
Could you read them?
September tenth, there'd be the meeting to adopt the tax rate at nine AM, Commissioner's Court. Also for the first public hearing on the tax rate if needed, and this was gonna change that to eleven.
If you can.
Okay. Ten o'clock, and nine o'clock, Commissioner's Court. September eighteenth, the second public hearing on the tax rate is needed at five thirty PM, Commissioner's Court. And September twenty-fourth, meeting to adopt a tax rate if the tax rate hearings are required at nine AM, Commissioner's Court. All those dates, okay?
September seventeen, September twenty-four, five thirty, and September seventeen.
Okay, yeah, eighteen.
Five thirty, and September twenty-fourth at nine AM.
Right.
We don't have that in our package this time, it was just presented.
Okay, do you, do you vote on that, most of the dates?
I make a motion that we accept the dates as previously presented.
We have a second. We have a second, and all of those in favor. Okay, do we have any county insurance items?
No, we do not.
And now, Sharon, for closed meeting. On top of your, of your.
Recent.
Recent, that's what I'm looking at. At ten twenty-three, there will be some vacuum. Well, it is, uh, ten forty-nine, court's back in session. At this time, there was no accident, or closed session. Anything on executive session, uh, item number twenty-three? Uh, twenty-four, been to item for next meeting, yeah, maybe Thursday, right?
Just our payroll.
Anything else to come before the court? This time we are all adjourned.